Are you entertaining the crowd?
Yeah.
Trying to.
He's making them up.
And just for the record, if you see me looking at my phone while this is going on, I'm studying the weather. There's a cell that stalled out over us that says it's producing, but we've talked to all four corners of this county and there's not a flake flying anywhere. But until we make the official call about tomorrow, we're trying to get this cell moved through so that I can safely say we're headed back tomorrow. Right, Mr. Shirley? And thank you for your patience.
Ready? Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A 1 through 5, B 1 through 4, C 1 through 42?
So moved.
Second.
Guys are really thinking about them today.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Welcome, everyone. We're surprised to see you. We didn't think anyone was braving the weather today, but thanks for coming. Just before we get started, I want to let you guys know that we did have to amend the agenda today because we canceled some stuff because of the weather that got moved to our next agenda. So if you see any differences, that's why. We're not playing tricks on you. I promise.
We can make note.
All right. If you can, could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 21st regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We have a relatively brief agenda today, so we will get right into it. First, we have short recess on here, but obviously it's not necessary, so we'll skip that. The next thing is public participation on agenda items. We have none for today. The next thing up is the consent agenda. The members should have all received all the supporting documents. Did everyone have any opportunities to answer any questions, any discussion? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. And that brings us to presentation items with the one and only Dr. Josh Lo on the 24-25 calendar update. Riveting.
Yes, sir. One second, please. All right. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update for historical reasons. Last year, for our new board members, the high school principals met with our board and discussed the need for us to have a virtual, pardon me, an online learning week each May during testing to help with essentially AP testing and the number of students in our community that take that, take those tests at different schools. And as y'all know, our calendar is done several years in advance. Well, the 24-25 calendar was actually approved back in 2022. However, we have to wait on College Board each year to tell us when the AP testing window is before we can actually put that on our calendar for our students and our schools to plan. And so if you look, and we have it highlighted with two stars here, but this year, the AP testing window that we plan to utilize is the week of May 5th, is the online learning week that week, and that will assist our high schools with the number of tests that take place in each campus, being able to get students on and off and comply with the expectations of those tests. And with that said, I just was here tonight to update y'all to let y'all know what week that would be this school year. And this calendar was previously approved, so you don't necessarily need to approve it. Just wanted to make you aware of what the week would be this year since the date was released and we were able to get it notated on our calendar. And I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Come out, so.
Are you entertaining the crowd?
Yeah.
Trying to.
He's making them up.
And just for the regular, if you see me looking at my phone while this is going on, I'm studying the weather.
There's some.
There's a cell that stalled out over us. It says it's producing, but we've talked to all four corners of this county and there's not a flake flying anywhere. But until we make the official call about tomorrow, we're trying to get this cell moved through so that I can safely say we're headed back tomorrow. But, right, Mr. Shirley? And thank you for your patience.
Ready? Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Do I have a motion to approve personnel A, 1 through 5, B, 1 through 4, C, 1 through 42?
So moved.
Second.
Guys really thinking about them today.
All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Welcome, everyone. We're surprised to see you. We didn't think anyone was braving the weather today, but thanks for coming. Just before we get started, I want to let you guys know that we did have to amend the agenda today because we canceled some stuff because of the weather. That got moved to our next agenda, so if you see any differences, that's why. We're not playing tricks on you. I promise.
We can make note.
All right. If you can, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 21st regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. We have a relatively brief agenda today, so we will get right into it. First, we have short recess on here, but obviously it's not necessary, so we'll skip that. The next thing is public participation on agenda items. We have none for today. The next thing up is the consent agenda. The members should have all received all the supporting documents. Did everyone have any opportunities to answer any questions, any discussion? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. And that brings us to presentation items with the one and only Dr. Josh Lo on the 2425 calendar update. Riveting.
Yes, sir. One second, please. All right. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update for historical reasons. Last year, for our new board members, the high school principals met with our board and discussed the need for us to have a virtual, pardon me, an online learning week each May during testing to help with essentially AP testing and the number of students in our community that take that, take those tests at different schools. And as y'all know, our calendar is done several years in advance. Well, the 2425 calendar was actually approved back in 2022. However, we have to wait on College Board each year to tell us when the AP testing window is before we can actually put that on our calendar for our students and our schools to plan. And so if you look, and we have it highlighted with two stars here, but this year, the AP testing window that we plan to utilize is the week of May 5th. Is the online learning week that week, and that will assist our high schools with the number of tests that take place in each campus, being able to get students on and off and comply with the expectations of those tests. And with that said, I just was here tonight to update y'all to let y'all know what week that would be this school year. And this calendar was previously approved, so you don't necessarily need to approve it. Just wanted to make you aware of what the week would be this year since the date was released and we were able to get it notated on our calendar. And I'm happy to take any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions?
Questions, discussion? No? That was easy, Dr. Lo.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is the finance report with Mr. Steve Atha.
Good evening, board. Good to see y'all. On your screens, I assume you can see these.
Yep, we got it.
Okay. This is the December 2024 financial statement report. The first report I'd like to present is the statement of cash receipts and disbursements for December. This report is kind of like your check register. You write down your account. Next month, you got money coming in, money coming out, then you got an ending balance. That's what this does. So you can see we're starting at $356 million. We add in different receipts, property taxes, title ad valorem, et cetera, donations, interest, various reimbursements, for total cash receipts of $43 million. And then below that, the is, or the subtractions, accounts payable, payroll, $37 million, $26 million. The net of those gives you the ending balance of $335,629,887. Couple of things to point out about this. This does not contain school foods or capital projects or debt service, workers' comp, cash. This is mostly general fund, but it also contains agency funds and grant money. So we'll continue. One other item, if y'all want to study these in more depth. This payroll amount down here at the bottom, those are net payroll checks, so don't get that confused when you look at the budget report and you see that, you know, payroll is higher, salaries are higher. These are actually net payroll checks. And the payroll overhead is included in the accounts payable, that's your TRS, state health, FICA. But anyway, that's probably more than you wanted to know, but there it is. The next report is the year-to-date budget report for revenue. Two main drivers of this, big pieces are right here, your ad valorem taxes and your QBE grants, these two items. This is the bulk of where the money comes from. As you can see, this is the monthly amount, December, in this column, and the year-to-date amount that has come in. Ad valorem taxes, you can see 97% of those have been, of the budgeted amounts have been collected. So this is all but 3% collected. The QBE money comes in prorata throughout the year, so we're right at 50%. So on the whole, we've collected almost 71% of the total expected revenue for fiscal year. The year-to-date budget report, top line is revenues, which we just covered. This report shows the expenditures, budgeted, month-to-date, year-to-date, encumbrance, what's in the pipeline, and the remaining budget over here to the right. It's broken out by function area, instructional, people services, et cetera. The big takeaway here is 50.57% of the budget remains or has been spent, and that's tracking about where we expected it to be. The debt service cash analysis shows the accounts that can be used for debt service. This first column, debt service, this is a checking account. The debt service LGIP is where we warehouse money so that it'll collect interest throughout the year. This next spliced LGIP account is, this one's going to be closed shortly, so you probably won't see this next month on this report. And then Sploß 6, on the far right, these monies can be used for debt service. They will not all be used for debt service, but they can be. But $35,521,000 is remaining in Sploß 6, and the total debt services cash available, Special revenue funds, these are your Title I, Title II, Title III grants, plus your special education IDEA, IDEA federal grants. Matter of fact, the IDEA grant is about 2/3 of all of this. But this is the amounts that are budgeted, month-to-date, year-to-date, what's been spent, and then encumbrance, that's just what's in the pipeline waiting to be spent. But it's already encumbered, so it's part of the budget. So this is the remaining budget available. Capital projects and school food services, this is where the cash for those funds are contained. Capital projects, start of the year, $21,716,840. Facilities, money spent on various projects, $3,189,015, and transfers in, $4,096,974. School food services account, this is money that's held in their checking account and their LGIP investment account, $20,404,031. Add to that program revenues, $1.6 million. This number actually should be on this line, but the expenditures in school food service, $1.7 million, leaving a balance of $20,303,353.
Is that about where, is it tracking where we were last year this time?
It's very comparable. Yep. Let me see if I got a note on that.
If not, you can get back to me, all right?
I can't find, I thought I had the last year. I can't find it. The investment summary, this shows all the monies that are held over at LGIP, the local government investment program. Yield's about 4%, 4.5%, very easy to work with. But as you can see, the balance in the general fund, this reflects a lot of the tax revenue we just brought in. That's pretty standard for this time of year. During December, we moved over $96 million. Had to move 26 back, 26 million back out for payroll. That's happens every month. Then debt service, this is the $29 million that was moved over from the checking account so that it can earn interest. Food service, just collected interest. This one's going to go away. And Sploß 6, there were projects, Sploß 6 projects totaling $2.1 million, $2.2 million. Add to that the spliced tax received during the month of December and interest earned. And the total amount held over at LGIP and investments, $343,884,399. This worksheet is the schedule of Sploß receipts, Sploß 6 receipts. See that the Sploß taxes collected in the month of December, actually, they were collected in November and paid out to the system, school system in December, is $5,288,686,000. This compares to last year, $5,158,005,15, up 2.52%. And then this is a list of cash balances held at each of the individual schools. All this looks very consistent with prior months. That's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much. All right. That concludes our presentation and discussion items. Next up on the agenda are action items. We have only one for tonight, which is the adoption, the decision to adopt the 2025 goals for the governance team. So we've, we've all seen these before. We've discussed it in these meetings before, but I'll just, real quick, this year, we wanted, we typically would have adopted this last year, since we knew we were going to have three new members coming in, we decided to wait until this year so that they could have a say in it and be, and be part of the process of forming these goals, since you guys would be the ones that have to live with it. So that's, that's what we did this year, so that you'll find the schedules a little bit off. And all we really did this year was align our five goal, our six goal areas, our five goal areas, very, very closely to the strategic plan. So the first goal area is about social and emotional health. The second is about the learner experience. The third is about staff recruitment and development. The fourth is about culture, climate, and community. And the fifth is about operational excellence. These will all be posted online, so everybody can have access to them. Unfortunately, we don't have them up on the screen, but I won't sit here and read a bunch of pages to you, but we will put these online so that the community can see them. So any discussion on these items? All right. So do I have a motion to adopt the 2025 governance team goals?
So moved.
Oh, good. All in favor? Unanimous. All right. Next up is points of information. You all should have received in your board packages, the points of information. Is there any, any discussion or anything new to add? Nope? All right. We have a short recess on the agenda. I don't think it's necessary. If you guys are good, we'll just, we'll move right on. So that brings us to the public participation portion of the agenda. And I just want to remind you guys of the rules, and for those who have not done this before, so you'll be aware, right up here in the podium, there's a device with three lights on it, green, yellow, and red. When the light is green, that's your three-minute start. When the light is yellow, there's 30 seconds remaining. When the light starts flashing yellow, you got 10 seconds, and then a real obnoxious buzzer will go off, and that means you're out of time. Okay? First up is Mr. Jer Kuschel.
Thank you. A golden age has dawned in our country. Title line changes to let grown men into girls' sports and bathrooms have been rejected by the courts. Government crackdowns on concerned parents are a thing of the past. The sex trafficking of illegal immigrants will no longer be aided by DHS. FEMA will no longer skip helping houses that have the wrong political signs on their lawn after hurricanes. And the military will once again accept the fundamental reality of male and female. If you had shown up in Forsyth County back in, say, 2012, and you tried to tell them what the government did from 2021 to 2024, they would be shocked. The relentless march of leftist ideas through our institutions started decades ago, but their aggressive actions over the past 12 years or so flipped otherwise rational people a full 180 degrees on basic common sense issues for no other reason than to fit in with their political tribe. Turning the clock back on the cultural wars a mere dozen years seems like a radical idea, but only because we've been terribly abused and traumatized by the woke left. 2025 is time to bring back 2012. With all due respect to those with big hearts caught up in the mass woke psychosis, there are only two genders. Gender dysphoria is a disease, and any child in our schools affected by this disease needs mental health treatment, not blind affirmation. I'm asking the board to make it a policy that any child found to have gender identity delusion be referred to mental health treatment and never affirmed by any district staff. There are infinite personalities, but personalities are not limited by healthy, natural bodies. Related to the gender insanity is the concentrated push to normalize sexualized materials for kids at ever younger ages. Our library should not have age inappropriate materials or push woke ideologies on our children. You could stock our shelves with only books written before 1990, and nobody would be missing out on anything. And for kids that do end up with abnormal sexuality, there are plenty of examples of that already in the mainstream media for them to relate to. The same goes for books that push the toxic critical race theory and DEI tropes. It's wonderful to have books that celebrate Booker T. Washington, but anti-racist baby and other propaganda that pushes the idea that we have to be vigilant against microaggressions in the year 2025 needs to be removed. It doesn't matter how many fake awards a book was given by leftists, or how cool it might seem to the media specialists just out of a far-left school of education, it's time to get back to common sense. Parents interested in exposing their children to this kind of stuff can do it on their own. Finally, diversity happens naturally. Equity denies free agency, and inclusion cannot mean we have no standards. All references to DEI must be removed from our district and should be replaced with MEI, merit, excellence, and intelligence. This is not cruel, this is common sense, and our nation is finished with being emotionally blackmailed by the woke. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time, and I would love to have lunch with anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Janel Mortensen. Welcome. Are all these people here as your backup?
Yes.
Because you guys outnumber us now.
Yes, they are here to support the orchestra. Good evening. My name is Janel Mortensen, and tonight I would like to address the board concerning orchestra in our school district. I have been advocating for orchestra in our schools for several years now, and I would like to acknowledge the many wonderful and supportive people I've worked with in the schools. Dr. O, Principal Piney Grove, Mr. McKinney Band Director at Piney Grove, Kim Oliver, Principal at Denmark and her VP of Fine Arts, and Heather Gordy in the Human Resources Department. Forsyth County School District has a strategic arts plan written for 2020 to 2025 that was presented to the board on January 14th, 2020. It states the following. Objective: Provide orchestra programs in designated vertical teams. Outcome: Enable greater student choice by expanding the variety of arts offerings. Milestones: Year one, hire itinerant orchestra teachers, or teachers that travel from school to school, to serve high school starter programs. Year two, increase the number of itinerant teachers to serve in the middle school starter program, programs. Year three, transition itinerant teachers to full-time as needed depending on growth. It is 2025, and currently only one high school and one middle school have full-time orchestra teachers. There are no itinerant teachers, to my knowledge, nor have there been. Currently, the way the system works, it is, is that it is up to each principal to start a program. I think this makes it too difficult to begin and grow programs. First of all, although I have personally worked with some very supportive administrators and band directors, this unfortunately is not always the case. For example, in Water Middle School, one middle school has offered a club started at their school at no cost to them or to their students, as was done at Piney Grove. The principal refused the offer multiple times without explanation. Secondly, those who are supportive run into problems with numbers, funds, and allocations. Putting the burden solely on the principals to start a program is an extra burden to bear and would likely fail since it would have to start, it would have to be an entire cluster of middle schools and a high school to truly succeed. Thirdly, it has also been my experience that principals come and go, but the community they serve stays the same. Why then is it up to the principals to decide whether or not to take on the burden of starting an orchestra program? Orchestra clubs and community orchestras have been started in many areas to fill this void, and although they are wonderful opportunities, they do not afford the same opportunities for growth that a class would provide. It does, however, show that there is a demand to start a program in the schools. Why have you not heard about this demand before? Quite frankly, it has been difficult, as parents, to make our voices heard. I am here to ask the board to set aside funds to give the schools to start an orchestra program. In addition, I propose that those people who have been successful in starting either classes in school, clubs, or community orchestras be consulted on the best ways to start and grow an orchestra program in our county. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me speak tonight. I look forward to hearing a response from the board, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. All right. That is the end of the public participation portion of the agenda, and actually, the end of the agenda. So if there's nothing else from the members, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Grimes, second by Ms. Hoys. All in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everyone. Thank you.